Are we all ready, Madam Clerk? Are we ready for kickoff? Okay. Right. Good evening, everybody. Light court order, the regular planning commission meeting for City of Campbell, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Madam Clerk, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Zizer, Commissioner Rivlin.
Present.
Commissioner Strasky.
Present.
Commissioner Kamkar.
Present.
Commissioner Craig. Vice Chair Bookbinder.
Present.
Chair Ching.
Here. Thank you. So I don't believe there's any approval of minutes there deferred to the meeting of the twenty-eighth of June. Community Development Director, do we have any communications qualifications or postponements?
Nothing in your packet. Please note the commission for the first item is to be continued by staff. You'll have to open and close the hearing. This is the first item on your agenda. Other than that, nothing additional from staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving to the oral requests. This is a point on the agenda where members of the public may address the commission on items of concern to the community that are not listed on the agenda this evening. People may speak up to five minutes on any matter concerning the commission. Is anybody, Madam Clerk, anybody online?
Do we have anyone online that would like to speak under oral requests? No, we don't.
Thank you. Close that. So we have three agenda items tonight. One is for continuance, but we still have to go through the process. Before I read out the agenda items, do I have any disclosures from my fellow commissioners? Okay, so moving to the first item tonight, PLN dash twenty twenty-one dash two zero six, public hearing to consider the request of Bailel Ilta at this general construction for property located at three eight eight Hatchet Court to allow an approximately four hundred and three square feet addition to a single family house resulting in a far of zero point five. The application on the construction includes a site and architectural review permit, file number PLN dash twenty twenty-one dash two zero six. Staff is recommending that this item be deemed categorically exempt from SEQA. Planning Commission action is final and less appealed in writing to the City Clerk within ten calendar days. So over to staff, or do you want me to just read out the proposed motion?
Either way, staff is recommending continuance to your next meeting. Nothing additional.
Okay, so we have a motion. What do I see? Do I hear somebody proposing a motion for continuance?
That's happened in the hearing, I think.
Good, it's the whole thing. I forgot. And the city attorney, the city attorney will remind me. That's what happens when you get old. So
maybe Morgan can change seats with you.
I told you, I told you it was gonna be one of those evenings, doesn't it? So first of all, do we have any questions to staff on this motion for continuance? And I don't see any, so I'll open it up to the fit for serving, yeah. So I'll open it up for the public hearing. I don't think we see anybody. So closing the public hearing.
Actually, you would keep the public hearing open.
Really?
Yes.
Okay, I'll reopen it. I get to do a lot of hammer action tonight for this one item.
In no time, I'll make a motion that we continue as I turn our next meeting of.
Thank you for putting the. I'll second the motion. Can we have a voice vote, please?
Commissioner Rivlin.
Aye.
Commissioner Strasky.
Aye.
Commissioner Kamkar.
Aye.
Commissioner Craig.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bookbinder.
Aye.
Chair Ching.
Aye. So unsurprisingly, that was carried unanimously. And I'll move on to the second item. So this is the PLN dash twenty twenty-one dash three three thirty-three. Continued public hearing to consider the request of Brad Cox, Architect Inc., to allow relocation of existing office building. Converted folk Victorian residence from nineteen forty Hamilton Avenue to nineteen eighty Hamilton Avenue for use as an administrative office for the first Congregational Church of San Jose and removal of four protected trees. The application on the consideration includes a conditional use permit and a tree removal permit, file number PLN twenty twenty-one dash three three. Staff is recommending this item be deemed categorically exempt on SEQA. Planning Commission action is final and less appealed in writing to the City Clerk within ten calendar days. Project Planner, Daniel Farmer, Senior Planner, please, Daniel.
Okay, good evening. The application before you is a conditional use permit for nineteen eighty Hamilton Avenue. This is the first Congregational Church of San Jose property located at the northeast corner of Hamilton and Lee avenues. This is a six-acre church campus located within the PF Public Facility zoning district and within the Institutional General Plan Land Use District. The primary land use of the church is technically classified by the City's zoning code as a public assembly use. And the site is also occupied by a commercial school that was approved by a separate conditional use permit, most recently seen by the Planning Commission in two thousand and nineteen. The application for the conditional use permit would allow relocation of a non-historic sixteen hundred square foot converted folk Victorian structure onto the church property that itself was converted to an office in two thousand and thirteen. This building would be used as an administrative office by church staff. Issue here in the site plan, that building would be oriented to help frame the existing courtyard effectively just being moved, just backwards from the adjacent property here, just across the property line into the proposed placement here oriented towards the interior of the courtyard. Application also does include a proposal for a true removal permit to allow removal of three remaining protected trees that are either within the footprint of the proposed relocated structure or within the relocation route. As noted in the email that was sent to you earlier today, the applicant did clarify that one of these trees had already been removed because it was dead. So technically, the application would be for the three remaining protected trees. Just a quick summary of the staff report. The site is not conforming for a lack of a conditional use permit. It was established prior to the property's annexation to the City of Campbell. As such, the City's zoning code requires a conditional use permit upon any proposed intensification of the site. And it's defined very broadly, but it will most certainly include creating placement of a new building on the property. And then as noted, use of the administrative office would be consistent with the PF zoning district since the office activity is directly related to the existing public assembly use of the church and is an ancillary activity, not a standalone office, which would not be permitted. Just with regard to parking, the parking requirement for a public assembly use is based on the assembly area, either the number of seats if you have an auditorium with fixed seats or square footage based if you have an auditorium without fixed seats. Either way, the addition of administrative office does not incur any additional parking demand. In conclusion, staff recommends that the Plank Commission adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit and its removal permit to allow relocation of the existing office building onto the site and removal of the three remaining trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Questions for staff? Please, Commissioner Craig.
Yeah, Daniel, it just seems like such a win-win. I'm just trying to get the process a little bit. In case others like this come up. But so this this building is not historic, was not designated historic, but the owner did this real major historic study on that just because it was old and they wanted to make sure it wasn't historic and they were being nice about it, kind of a thing?
Not quite. There is certainly some back history there. The property has never been on the city's historic resource inventory, so the city has never classified it as historic. That being said, given its age, there was a need in the past when the property owner was looking at actually demolishing the building of conducting a more formal historic review for the purposes of SEQA. Because demolition of a structure that meets the state's requirement for an historic property is classified as a significant impact under the law. So in order to address that issue upfront, the property owner did procure an historic assessment, which was then peer reviewed by the city's historic advisor who confirmed its results that the property has effectively been modified to such an extent that it no longer qualifies for the historic eligibility.
I got that. I read the report. That was the current owner, though, that did that.
Correct.
Okay, okay. And then in terms of the the church, were they actually looking for an office building? Or are they just happy to take a real cool looking building and?
Well, the owner initially was thinking of removing the building and then there was a study session we'll deal with the next item. But this was a relationship that developed after some of those initial conversations and the property owner can speak to that more.
Yeah, it just kind of seems like a win-win. So I was just wondering. And then, and just to be sure, the garage and that garden fence, they would go away, I guess.
Correct. The whole site would be redeveloped.
And I know in the past, I know, I do remember when this came up for our original discussion, which was a real nice discussion a couple of years ago. But there's been no, no neighbors, neighbors have been renoticed and there hasn't been any, no input from anybody.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So, given that they're removing trees, are we requiring them to replace the trees? Or given that this is an allowable removal of protected trees, that's just not part of what they're required to do?
The standard conditions of approval, you don't need a condition of approval since it is a requirement of the city's tree protection ordinance would require a one-for-one replacement. So those trees could be planted anywhere on the property.
I must have missed that. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I'll open it up to public hearing, public. Would anybody like to speak on this topic with the applicant? The applicant here? Anybody online?
Mark Domnauer. It's coming.
Yes. Thank you.
Mark, we can't really hear you.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Oh, that's great.
Great. So to answer the question about where we're looking for an office, and the answer was yes, we, our current school is looking to add another classroom or two. And so by having this building on our campus, we can move out of existing classroom space that we use for offices. And this will allow us to free up space for future classroom space for the school, which of course would require a different CUP be amended at that time. But this is gonna help us down the line about a year or two from now.
Okay, any questions for Mark? Thank you. Please, anybody else?
Is there anybody else online that would like to speak under this agenda item?
Okay, I'll close this and look to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Craig.
Right, yeah, this is really just kind of a nice win-win. I you know, I kind of started the report, the historic study, which goes on and on. I just started, I was gonna just breeze through it and I wound up sitting down and boy, was that interesting. It really is an interesting history with this building, even though not of so much significance with the ownership to be historic. But I think it's great that we can say this, it's really a cool building, as obviously we all know. It just seems like a really nice win-win. And I think it's a great idea. The cost is is three trees. And one reason this area is really, it's just a really nice little pocket of Campbell. For a number of reasons, we got the, we got the nice church and we got this really cool old building and then we got so many beautiful trees. I mean, I'm gonna lose a few of them, so that that is a pity, but it does look like a couple of the, of the real nice ones are, you know, they're maintaining it and everything. So yeah, I think it's, I think it's a good project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think with the next item, the more facts are gonna come out, but I just wanna say it's wonderful that they were able to find this win-win solution to reusing a structure, you know. And so it warms my heart. I just wish the name Campbell was in the name. Church of San Jose in Campbell or something, but otherwise I'm supportive of the application. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm supportive as well. And I think, you know, with many supply items in short supply, it's nice to see a reuse of an existing building rather than having it demolished.
Commissioner, no added comments, seems reasonable and I support it. Thank you.
Just second that I think it's a really cool looking building and it's really neat that they've managed to figure out how to move it. So I would be in support of this.
Thank you. Do I hear a proposal for motion?
All right, I'm happy to move to the Plank Commission adopt the resolution, reference attachment one, approving a conditional use permit and a tree removal permit to allow relocation of existing office building and removal of three protected trees at nineteen forty Hamilton Avenue to nineteen eighty Hamilton Avenue.
Thank you. Second. If we have a voice vote, please.
Commissioner Rivlin.
Aye.
Commissioner Strasky.
Aye.
Commissioner Kamkar.
Aye.
Commissioner Craig.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bookbinder.
Aye.
Chair Ching.
Aye. That's carried unanimously again. And appeal, that is final and less appealed within ten calendar days to the City Clerk in writing. So moving on to our third item, PLN twenty twenty-one dash one seven seven, continued public hearing to consider the request of David Fenster, modulous for property located at one nine four zero Hamilton Avenue to allow construction of a two-story, approximately eight thousand square foot professional office building with a rooftop deck and associated site lighting, parking and landscaping improvements. And the proposed shared parking and site access arrangement with the adjacent First Congregational Church of San Jose located at one nine eight zero Hamilton Avenue. The applications under consideration include a site and architectural review permit and parking modification permit file number PLN dash twenty twenty-one dash one seven seven. Staff is recommending that the site can be deemed categorically exempt on SEQA. Planning Commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the City Clerk within ten calendar days. Senior Planner, Daniel Farmer.
Thank you again. So this is an application for a site and architectural review permit with a parking modification permit for nineteen forty Hamilton Avenue. This is the property immediately adjacent to the prior property where that folk Victorian house currently exists. It is the location of the Omni Law Group, which I had noted previously is a professional office that is within the building that had been converted by the Plank Commission under a conditional use permit in two thousand and thirteen. It is a twenty thousand square foot lot on Hamilton Avenue, mid-block between Lee and Phantom Avenues. This property is owned PEO Professional Office with the corresponding professional office land use designation. The applicant's proposal include a site and architectural review permit to allow construction of a two-story, approximately eight thousand square foot professional office building with associated improvements as well as a parking modification permit to allow a shared parking inside access arrangement with the adjacent church property. In terms of the site layout, we have the building up towards the street with parking in the rear consistent with the general plan guidance on site arrangements. The site access is shown here. This is an existing driveway on the church property that runs along the subject property with the proposed shared site access arrangement. This would allow the office building parking lot to take access from that existing driveway, precluding the need for creation of additional driveway or curb cut on to Hamilton Avenue. This also allows for preservation of trees on the property that otherwise would have had it been lost to accommodate that new driveway. With regard to the shared parking arrangement, the project proposes twenty-five onsite stalls where thirty-five would be required. The proposal does propose allow, allowing the office building to share ten of the church parking stalls. And as discussing your staff report, the church is heavily overparked and already has a comparable shared parking arrangement with the school, which is very comparable to what is be proposed here. And as much as the church is more of a Sunday activity or potentially evenings during the weekdays, whereas professional office is more of a morning and daytime activity Monday through Friday. The site plan also shows the implementation of the city's Council Avenue image street improvements, which is a new sidewalk with an expanded park strip. You can actually see the transition from the adjacent property where that sidewalk actually turns down and then back up. In order to achieve that improvement within the existing curb line, the property is required to dedicate additional right-of-way to the city, which reduces its size by approximately twelve hundred square feet. That increases the FAR from what would have been a conforming point four to a little bit of just under point four or three. The Plank Commission is empowered to allow increases to FAR when circumstances warrant. As noted in your staff report, staff does believe this is an appropriate circumstance and as much as that the increase is a direct result of the city's action to require additional right-of-way. With regard to design, this building has been evolving a little bit over time. The bottom image is from the preliminary application proposal in October two thousand and twenty. That design was heavily characterized by the prominent glass rain screen, that glass element. The formal middle, however, took a more heavy wood-based approach, as shown on the left, constructed around the proposed use of cross laminated timber. That design was reviewed by the Site Architectural Review Committee earlier this year in April. Unfortunately, due to increased construction costs, the applicant had to do a modification to that design, which is included in your packet and as shown on the top right. This removes some of the more expensive features, specifically the horizontal mover system that would have created slotted openings into the building. But it's still generally consistent with general plant policy in terms of high quality and creative design, a use of quality materials such as the cross laminated timber. With regard to landscaping, as I noted, the application by not having to have its own driveway now is able to preserve all the protected trees on site. Any trees that are being removed are not protected in as much as they fall within, under the twelve inch diameter threshold. The project also proposes a substantially higher amount of landscaping than normally required, forty-four percent of site versus eight percent that would be normally required of a PO zone property. And then there is a minor request for a reduction to the rear landscaping area from five feet to one and a half feet. The zoning code allows the Plank Commission to grant such deviations when circumstances warrant in a comparable situation here. As noted, the, that rear property line actually has landscaping on the church property right behind it. So there effectively is that impression of a five-foot landscaping strip. Plus, the site also again provides a substantially higher amount of landscaping in the aggregate. And lastly, the overall landscaping plan would be consistent with the state's mandatory model water, water efficiency landscaping ordinance, which requires use of water-saving plantings. In conclusion, staff does recommend that the Plank Commission take the following action, adopt the resolution, approving the site and architectural review permit with the parking modification permit to allow construction of the two-story office building with the proposed shared parking and side access arrangement with the adjacent church property. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Questions for staff? Please, Commissioner Craig.
Yeah, Daniel, yeah, I'm good on the, on the parking FAR landscaping stuff, but on the, on the trees. So the tree legend, we have twenty-four. So the tree legend, we have twenty four trees and we have the Xs. Are those trees that will be removed?
Let's see.
And it's page four of ten of the staff report.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so and so the staff report, we say most of the mature diador cedar trees located at the front of the property. Originally were going to be removed, now it's, but I said, so there's the two, the two trees, right, we're talking about.
Correct, the eleven and twelve.
Cedar, so, okay. Okay.
And there was also eighteen, which is a live oak tree. Since the building can be more centered on the property, you don't have the driveway issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Actually, I was missing, I believe there's a SARC report because it was reviewed by staff, so, Vice Chair, did you want to say?
Sure. Commissioners this year was not present. This was back on April twenty sixth. So I'm looking at notes because I don't quite remember. I was impressed by the use of cross-laminated timber. I'm glad they've kept that. Definitely supportive of the design of the shared driveway with the church. I believe I had asked if all the parking could be shared with the church because there's enough room for it. But the applicant said that would make everybody kind of walk further and they would for not do that, which is, you know, their prerogative. And also we compliment, or I complimented the roof deck because roof decks are excellent amenities. And that's what this arc, which was me, had to say.
Thank you. I thought it was a good question about the parking. So appreciate that. Any other questions for staff? Please.
Am I correct in that we're in the process of increasing FAR for uses like this one to something like one point oh in the general plan that's currently under in process? Like not applying to this particular project, but in future this would not require an FAR.
It is in the draft general plan. It's undergoing environmental review. Yes. Thank you. Please, Commissioner Riven.
I'm happy to save this question for the applicant, but are we considering the project plans to be like a warm shell construction and the tenant, future tenant would put kitchen and amenities in the space? Or there is no intended to never be a kitchen space in this building?
Don't know the exact specifics. The owner of the law office currently intends to occupy the building, but of course, there's nothing obligating him to do that. I mean, generally, when the city approves an office building like this, it's effectively speculative in nature that they have a lot of leeway with the internal improvements.
Oh, I'll ask a similar detailed question to the applicant. Thanks.
If there's no further questions, I'll open up to the public. Would the applicant like to speak?
Sure. Hi, this is David Fenster. Can you hear me okay?
David, you're a bit faint. Could you?
Is that any better at all?
A little bit. Maybe if you could just speak up.
Okay. Hi, I'm David Fenster, architect from Modulus. And we designed the building in order to, or rather in response to the question regarding the kitchen. The statement was correct. This is currently proposed as a warm shell. There has been significant interest in the building already. The way that we designed the building with the hopes that this would be something that maybe a Campbell-centric business would find as a prominent new home for their company, knowing that there would be a draw then from local residents to be able to bike to the space and use it. So something that would be very much reflection of Campbell going forward into the future. We are, as I said, this is a warm shell, but we are prepping the building for a break area and some of the other amenities that a typical office of the size would have.
Okay. Thank you. Please, Commissioner Riven.
I think that answers my question and what we're looking at doesn't show those spaces, but I would assume they'd they'd fall, and this is back to staff based on that response. It would still fit all the conditions to have a space like that within, as long as it's not a restaurant or a
That is correct.
commercialized kitchen or something, but they could have a break space, sink, microwave, fridge, that kind of thing.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks to the applicant.
Any other questions? I actually had a question. When I saw the design, which was submitted to SARC with the horizontal louvers, I thought it was a stunning, stunning piece of architecture. And when I saw the revision without the horizontal louvers, you know, I still think it's great. It went from type of stunning in my mind to, I say merely great, right? Is it definitely that, you know, economics or the plans can't support that type of additional horizontal looving as a feature?
We tried really hard to keep them in. I was quite fond of them myself. We have, it's a little bit hard to see on the image on the right, but we do have two of the louvers are still in there. So the brow on the top extends a little bit further out. The fin on the bottom extends a little bit further out than they originally did. So it still accentuates the geometry of it. We've also since been working with the structure and I think what's going to be really nice, which is a slightly bit different than the image on the right, is we're going to bring some of those columns that you're seeing on exterior inboard for safety of the CLT material. And so I think we will get a nice clean glazed look on the front. So I can't say that they're a hundred percent out, but right now, based on the economics of the CLT and the way that the wood costs have gone up since we started the process a few years back. Currently, they are out of the overall design that we're moving forward. Yes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. It's still my minor signature building with or without them.
Yeah, we were able to keep in a lot of the, you know, almost every other single component about it. The wood on the exterior, the way that it's expressed, the stream on the bottom. We're really excited about how open the building is, how it really speaks to the current sustainability needs. We're really excited about the shared driveway that was able to be negotiated. We're overall, and I think I'm just echoing what one of the commissioners said earlier. It's a win-win, win-win, win-type of project. And Daniel and everybody from Campbell have been fantastic in helping us through this process as well in being really open-minded, trying to reduce some parking on site, the shared agreement, the shared driveway, the moving of the house, some of the square footage issues. And we feel like we're creating a signature building for Campbell to take a lot of pride in. So we're, everybody on the project team is really excited about the project.
Yeah, I think it's a great, great, great result beyond the architecture as well, as you say. With the agreement with the church. So thank you. Before I close.
Yeah, please. Question for the applicant. When, if all goes well, when do you expect to start construction? When do you expect to have the building done?
Our current goal is to get into building permits of middle. I'd say within the next, you know, three to four weeks. So pending how long that process is going to take, our, our goal would be that we're able to get a foundation built and things going up before the end of the year. So hopefully miss the rainy season. Hopefully we get a rainy season and hopefully we're, we're building ahead of it a little bit and not caught by it. And ideally, we get a tenant in there early next year. The, the way that CLT works is much of it is manufactured off-site, shipped to site and then assembled. And so the construction, once the foundation and some of the lower walls are done, will be really rapid for the shell of the building to come into place. The glazing will come a little bit behind that, but if all goes well, based on a lot of the response that the owner is getting, that I would think we may have a tenant before the building ever gets built or completed rather. And so then we would subsequently, you know, make their submission to the billing department and hopefully it's occupied by, you know, sometime middle of twenty twenty-three.
Sorry, we have a technical, technical issue, our end. It could have been worse.
Was there a motion, Commissioner Riven?
I think both of us will have to sit on the edge now. Sorry, there was a question to the, was that?
That answers my question. I'm really excited to see the first CLT building in Campbell going up. I believe this would be the first one.
Yeah, I believe so. Yep.
Do we, do we have anybody else from the public?
Is there anybody else online that would like to speak under this item?
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public section and move to the, to the commission, Commissioner Riven. I know you're dying to say something. Your computers.
Loaded like twenty lectures. Excuse me for that. I apologize. Anyway, I think the project's fantastic. I do agree it would be wonderful to see the louvers or some kind of the horizontal banding integrated into the project. But I think it will be a nice addition to the city of Campbell. I really appreciate the, the collaboration done with the adjacent property owner to share and be good neighbors as well as, you know, the prior item with moving the house. So there's all these layers to this that I think set a great example for future projects in Campbell. I know we're not here to debate that, but I really liked the partnership that was shown. And I think the project office space will, will probably lease quickly. I mean, I, that's subjective, but obviously it's going to be a new, nice space on Hamilton. So I support the project.
Thank you.
I think, also think it's a beautiful building and nice to see that area of Campbell revitalized and get some new and modern construction in the area. And I support the project as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, right. Talk about a little and that's, that is really cool and in, in really a real interesting design. And I think the staff report mentions how it's so unique and we've mentioned it and I think that's great. I do like that. I guess the one thing, and I am in favor, I guess I would say subjectively, I would, I can, I can think of a couple of other areas of Campbell where this type of project, I'd rather see it in a different location. I think here it works fine, but you know, it's, the staff report talks about the office building represents a transitional land use from the arterial traffic of Hamilton Avenue and the residential neighborhood located to the east of the project. So I'm not exactly sure what that transition is when I, as I read that a few times, but I did note that the buildings immediately east are, will be changed to an office eventually use, which kind of helps me embrace the project even more. And I do think it is a nice design. I think, you know, Campbell needs, needs more of this. Like I said, in a perfect world, I can think of a couple of other locations where something, you know, really modern and cool. It's kind of interesting you're putting the real modern, ultra-modern building here right next door, removing an eighteen eighty-nine building right next door. But I think it'll, I think it'll work fine. I think it'll be a plus for Campbell. So, thanks.
Thank you, Chair. Just like my colleagues, I'm excited to see this project come to Campbell. I am really ecstatic from the cooperation of the neighbors. I think it sets a fantastic example as to how a successful project can be done, you know. Good for the environment, good for the city, good for the owners, you know, just probably the only thing that could make it better is, is it was after game six of the NBA and when the Warriors beat the Celtics. But that shall remain, but otherwise I think this is great. That's my support. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
There's one thing I just want to double check with staff about. I want to take the letter from the Cressentinos next door seriously. Their main concern seems to be that there would be a, an active driveway between this building and their parcel on the east. As I understand it, the driveway is going to be on the west.
Correct. So that letter was dated from two thousand nineteen. It was actually submitted with the pre-app.
So we pretty, it has the data.
Basically, we included it just for full disclosure.
Okay, but the concerns, like I was thinking, the concerns seem to have been addressed.
Correct.
Like extensively. I, I appreciate the applicant having gone to great lengths to do that. Yeah, given that, I apologize for not noticing the date on that. Yes, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think this is a really nice looking building. I'm excited about the use of new building materials. I think it looks lovely and I really appreciate the lengths that the developer has gone to fit this into the particular location by sharing the driveway, by making sure to add all that greenscape and improve the sidewalk, very much in support of this project.
Thank you. Yeah, I think he's outstanding and a great partnership as well. So not just the architecture, but the whole project and kudos to staff for facilitating, hopefully, this very successful development for the city of Campbell. Do I hear a motion?
Should we make a motion that we, that the planning commission adopt a resolution? I hope they got the, yeah, reference attachment improvement to site and architectural review permit with a parking modification permit to allow construction of a two-story approximately eight thousand square foot professional office building with a shared parking and site access arrangement with the adjacent property at nineteen forty Hamilton Avenue.
Thank you. Second. And Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Rivlin.
Aye.
Commissioner Struski.
Aye.
Commissioner Kemkar.
Aye.
Commissioner Cray.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bookbinder.
Aye.
Chao Ching.
Aye.
So that is passed unanimously and planning commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within ten calendar days. So that's the last of the items for tonight. Thank you. Community Development Director, do we have a report?
A few quick items. Robbie Sturd, Community Development Director, congrats on the speed record, even without an NBA game in the background. Just a few items. So in order, we do have a commissioner opening. And if you know folks who'd like to be doing what you're doing, that opening is up in, in July to submit. And we encourage you to reach out to the community members and see if they'd like to apply for the position. I'll end it there. If there's more wants to be disclosed, but again, we do have an opening available and I hope folks will apply for the position. Number two, the American Planning Co., American Planning Association State Conference has just opened up. This is going to be October one to October four in Anaheim. So if you have little ones that like Disneyland, that might entice you. My understanding, practice in Campbell is two to three commissioners each time rotate and go. I'll flip back at the last time commissioners actually physically went and who went. But if you have not gone, great opportunity. We have budget and funds that will fund you going. And we'll reach out to you soon because I know the hotel rooms go very fast. So between Andrea, I and some others, we'll just pull you on who'd like to go and book those hotel rooms as soon as possible. Again, the dates are October one to four, if you're looking at your calendar. Number three, we did publish a housing amendment. So all that hard work you did with the city council. Again, at least six to seven meetings between the fall and the spring. So that was published last Thursday. It has a three-day review, goes till July eleventh, after which we'll submit it to the state. So it's been distributed to multiple channels and out for public review and we're looking forward to comments from the public and our stakeholders. Finally, last but not least, glad to announce two new staff onboarding. Starting tomorrow, we have a new industrial analyst. That's a position that has not existed in the community development department. That person will have a variety of duties, one of which will be supporting the commission. So you might, of course, remember Abby has been here for a couple of months. Abby was in a temp position. We're going to see if she can stick on for a little bit, but generally our new analyst, his name is Ken Ramirez, will be coming on and supporting. We've been super lucky to have Andrea from our clerk's office in her very professional capacity to support the commission. But she has much to do in the clerk's office. So you'll likely see Ken Ramirez here next month and he'll start to support the commission also. So heads up on that. And then we do have a planning tech mission who will starting in about two weeks. Her name is Ashwara. It'll be key on unlocking. We had a huge backlog in building permits and planning applications because of the downturn in staff. So that person is going to be key in just opening the flow of permits going through our office. And that is all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions?
Where can we find the applications for the planning commission opening to send to people?
Those are located on the city clerk's webpage. You can find it there.
I'll have a look. Thank you.
It's, I think you can also access it from the city website under the boards and commissions.
I didn't see anything on the planning commission page, but I'll, I'll have a look.
I think there's like a top parent page that's boards and commissions where you can find it.
That sounds right. Oh, thank you.
You, you can't apply twice. You know that.
I have friends.
It's also posted on the bulletin board at the parking lot right here. So you can view it there.
Okay, thank you. Um, at which point I'll join it to the next regular planning commission meeting on June the twenty eighth. Thank you. Good night.